He's out due to a death in the family and so let's speak slowly because he's going to cover it all from there. DVD of the meeting. So, do I have a motion to accept September 23rd minutes?
Make a motion.
Thank you, Augusta.
Second.
Thank you, Peter. Any comments, further questions? Okay. Well, you can actually, someone told me, as long as you read the minutes, you can vote approval on them.
Why would I read them?
Why would you read them? Okay.
Doesn't have to agree with them.
Just have to read them.
You agree that that's what was said.
That's what's said.
But if you weren't here.
How do you know? I know. I've asked that person the same question, but anyhow. Based on that, we have a motion and a second. All those, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And one abstention, Lyle. Okay. Public comment? We opened up a session for anybody, public comment. You look all like you're applicants, so I will hold off on having anybody, any public comments. No one has any public comments. Public hearing, we have a Black Creek Crossing. I have a motion to open a public hearing on the Black Creek Crossing. Thank you, Peter. Is there a second? Thank you, Lyle. Is anybody here, besides Barry, talk about Black Creek Crossing? Yes?
My name is James Leva.
Could you speak up and?
My name is James Leva and I'm the proposed buyer of the property.
Okay.
Anthony is on his way.
But you'd like to see this all go through, I guess?
Absolutely.
Okay. I understand that. We'll leave that open until we get into the application and we'll let you talk at that time if you want to. Moving on to the application reviews. Green Taxi, come on up. Tell us what you're doing.
I got the, we have a simplified site plan.
Dave, did you have any comments? You can sit down. Oh, we're not that.
Thank you.
It's the change of use from an accounting, excuse me, an accounting tax office service to a taxi service and in the package with the simplified site plan application were description of the use where no more than two taxis would be part of that location. Hours of operation would be from eight to five. It's not going to be a taxi stop, it's just going to be an office. Customers won't be shown up there. And there are, there's plenty of parking. So, it was my recommendation that this be accepted as a simplified site plan for the board's review. I did talk to Stacy about this and she told me to let the board know that she agreed with that determination.
Okay. The board have any comments on it?
Does the change of use increase the parking requirements or have any effect on the parking requirement?
I looked at the parking for the both buildings and there appears to be excess parking for that building. We took the total square footage, took a second floor and looked at the barber shop and other offices in that building, still were less than its build there.
Tom, anything on it? Augusta? Nope. Lyle? Nope. So, could I have a motion to waive site plan review for this application? Or should I code it first?
You can make that motion. I would suggest to incorporate the requirement that these conditions incorporated in the business change of use approval by the building's.
All right, let me type it first. Simplified site plan is a classified as a type two for seeker determination. I'll make the motion. Is there a second? Basically, we won't have to do site plan. Next, I'll make a motion authorize a waiver of the site plan review for this application and authorize it under a simplified site plan with the conditions noted in the attachment to the simplified site plan. Hours of operation from eight to five, no more than two taxis will be operated from location, will not be a taxi stop, customers will not wait inside or outside the office, there is one bathroom in the office, no radio, there will not have a dispatcher service, only cell phones will answer the customer calls. So, based on that, I make a motion for approval of the simplified site plan. Thank you, Peter. Is there a second? Thank you, Lyle. Any further discussion? Okay. We have waived the requirements for site plan and we'll forward this back to the building inspector. So, all you have to do is deal with the building inspector for any work that has to be done there. Okay? Good luck.
We didn't vote.
Oh, we didn't vote? I thought we did. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you. Next up is Dunkin' Donuts. Somebody here for Dunkin' Donuts? Okay.
Haven't seen anything new on this.
I haven't seen anything new either, that's why I was.
One thing that you can consider with that application which is doesn't need to be in this type two because it needs to meet qualifications for type two signature.
On Dunkin' Donut?
Yeah, it's under 4,000 square feet of commercial space.
He was giving me a hard time about the building shape was changing.
They are putting something on their backend, they're not doing anything with parking lines here. They're not finding they're doing that now since they're looking for variance for the bulked cooler in the back. Makes it simpler.
Not sure what, well.
At the last meeting you had authorized circulation of a notice of intent to lead agency, but if it is a type two action, no further secret review is required, so it would be not needed to do that. That would just clarify that part of the procedure.
If I call it a type two, that's for all the agencies then? I mean, ZBA?
Well, no. Each agency would make its own determination.
Okay.
There's no lead agency, but they should designate a type two. I want to advise this.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I have to talk to Linda about that. Board want to classify as a type two? I haven't seen the revised plans yet, so.
It's pretty simple, yeah.
Yeah. All right, so let's.
Wait for the review.
That's what I said. I want to see if they didn't change anything to parking lines. Okay. Next up is Black Creek.
Add some.
line and a request for waivers. So, have we modified accordingly?
Conservation easements.
That was the big dotted line.
I believe you wanted to show the setback, closest point there, just 30, 36.7 feet.
Okay.
And we requested, you know, the other.
I have the request for waivers here.
Right.
We'll go through that. Let's go ahead.
There's also a note that was added that this property is subject to all the conditions of the subdivision plan. Building dimensions and the conservation easement, the three things that I have is subject to the exception with the waiver.
Okay. Did he add the note about that first note, just, or were you mentioning that?
It is added.
It is added, okay.
That noting is adequate for you?
Yep.
We'll do a seeker determination and then close the public hearing.
Does the action exceed any type one threshold in 6 NYCRR, Part 617.4? Answer's no. Will the action receive coordinated review as provided for out listed actions in 6 NYCRR, Part 617.6? Answer's no. Could the action result in any adverse effects associated with the following? Existing air quality, surface or groundwater quality or quantity, noise levels, existing traffic patterns, solid waste productions, disposal, potential for erosion, drainage or flooding problems? There's no development being proposed, answer would be no. Does the action result in any adverse effect associated with aesthetic, agricultural, archaeological, historic, or other natural or cultural resources or community or neighborhood character? Lot line change? Answer would be no. Does the action result in any adverse effects associated with vegetation, fauna, fish, shellfish, or wildlife species, significant habitats, threat to endangered species? Yes, a lot line revision? Answer would be no. Could action result in any adverse effects associated with a community's existing plans or goals insufficiently adopted or change the use or intensity of use of the land or other natural resources? Answer would be no. Could the action result in any adverse effects associated with growth, subsequent development, or related activities likely to be induced by the proposed action? Answer's no. Could the action result in any adverse effects associated with long-term, short-term cumulative or other effects not identified in the above? Answer's no. Could the action result in any adverse section associated with other impacts including changes of use of either quantity or type of energy? Answer's no. Will the project have an impact on environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of the CEA, the business CEA here? So, the answer would be no. Is there or is there likely to be controversy related to potential adverse environmental impacts? Inductively not, based on the public hearing. The board, based on the information provided and the review of the EAF feels that there would not be a negative, significant negative impact to the environment.
Have a motion for a negative declaration. Environmental.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Have a motion to close the public hearing on the Black Creek Crossing. Thank you, Peter. Is there a second? Thank you, Tom. All those in favor? I have a request for a waiver for the, for Section 12117B and 121.28. Streets, sidewalks suitably placed, paved, and improved with the following. He's asking for a waiver for sidewalks, curbs, water mains, storm sewers, sanitary sewers, street signs, and street trees. Since we reviewed this entire subdivision and have come up with a number of these conditions for the entire subdivision, that wouldn't change anything that you came to propose. So, I have a motion to waive the above improvements.
On the other buildings in that subdivision, did we require an extra buffer for potential sidewalks?
Yeah, there is a buffer in that whole subdivision, yeah. This wouldn't eliminate that. That's what Dave was saying about being subject to the existing conditions of this subdivision. So, do I have a motion to waive it? Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, Tom. Any further discussion? All those in favor? I have a motion to grant preliminary approval for the Black Creek lot line revision.
No condition.
Well, we waived that and.
Second.
All those, any discussion? All those in favor? Since we didn't have anybody for the final, for the public hearing, can I get a motion to grant a waiver of the final hearing for the Black Creek Crossing subdivision?
I didn't know you could do that.
Thank you. Any discussion on that? We do have monuments that will be suitably placed and installed, right? Because of the irregular.
Yeah, it's in progress right now and we're going to be offering the road to the town shortly. It was just recently paved and we're in the process of preparing an ASB build and setting the corners that, you know, the final corners, you know, for the whole entire road section and that. Probably within the month will be submitted to the town, or submitted to you, Dave.
In particular, this lot line change where we have the triangle out, that corner certainly has to be set here.
Right.
I know it's on the original subdivision plan.
So, we could, we can put on the file map that those corners are set?
Is that be fine?
Yeah.
Okay.
These two are supposed to be coordinate markers anyway, right?
I don't know. I can't answer that question right now, but whatever they are, we'll set them.
Okay. Got a motion to grant final? Sure. That I can't answer right now, but they wouldn't, it would be paid up before I sign the maps.
It's just a question I ask on every single one.
Yep.
I, it's sort of odd that people are subdividing again and profiting and if we haven't been paid out, you know.
Oh, but Black Creek is already paid out. The entire subdivision is closed out.
You haven't gotten one.
There's nothing outstanding in that. But this application, I don't know where the status is without Kelly being here. And I wouldn't sign the map until Kelly had signed off on, well, the fees being paid. Okay. If I make, somebody want to make a motion to grant final approval to the Black Creek Crossing lot line revision, conditioned upon markers being placed at the relocations of the triangle cut out. Thank you, Peter. Is there a second? Thank you. Any other further questions? Silence means consent. All those in favor? Aye.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir.
We'll get you the final maps and everything and move this forward. I know it's early and it's not even nine o'clock yet, huh?
Well, look at the bright side of the thing. People here at 10 o'clock will say, "Look, it's stopped nine o'clock yet."
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Take care. Dave, you want to send me my form back?
No, that came in under the old one.
Anybody here for K&amp;E? Evening. Sign application. Oh, my goodness, let's see. Now the notes on it. Put the copies in. Okay. Three copies of it. Would have any, I guess, Danny, well, any questions, board?
I guess Stacy would do that for, to make sure it's not principal sign law.
Yeah. That's.
What are the regulations with landscaping around it? So, there's just that funny tree. I just wonder.
Yeah, that was.
What, you know, what the general.
The idea of that site plan was to landscape the planter.
Well, it has a tree. It has a shrub.
Somehow that's all.
It's kind of.
I think our terminology of.
A tree.
A tree and landscaping the planter is probably something a little bit different on that.
Yeah, it's not really so landscaped. It has a small breathing.
Okay, so it's, I guess the questions came up about landscaping it and I think we're going to want more than just what's shown is the tree, because the site plan has that planter planted, so.
He's going to have to call a landscaper on that.
Yeah, I know.
My thumbs are now green.
But I mean, if you, if you put it in as a condition, I'm sure he'll take care of that, yeah. I'm not.
You'd probably want low-lying shrubs, I would assume.
Yeah, I don't want to see starberrides growing up over it.
The other thing is, I kind of put that in there, whether he's going to, that really was kind of for aesthetics look there. That's an evergreen, that would be maintenance-free kind of in a way.
A little dwarf variety.
Yeah.
Or something like that.
It's something that, you know, looks, looks pleasing and is easily maintained.
Maybe two of those with a little low, you know, stuck around.
How many square feet is it? I'm curious. The bottle and pole works right up to the cap.
Well, the bottle is really the skirted base. It's hiding the pole, the single pole. The actual cabinet is to the square footage that's allowed. I have that, it should be on the application, written on there.
That's some clever skirting in the pole.
Well, he, he did express that to me, that he saw something similar, a sign in another county. Yeah, and he thought that was pretty interesting and it is. The square footage, I can calculate it right now if it's not on the application, which I thought it was.
I think it's 60 by 43.
Yeah, let's see, that's, there's 60, 63 equals to that about 144. We're at like 18 square feet, which is what's left.
And does that change the signage on the building? Or does that use up his maximum amount of signage or?
No, I'm allowed 18 square feet for free standing.
Okay, and that's, all right.
Is this something that needs an interpretation, Mike? About, I mean, the skirting is allowed there.
Well, that's the problem, the issue I had with before, I guess, when we looked at it the first time, was whether that was in or out.
It doesn't light up. It's not illuminated.
Back here when I spoke to George today, he said, "If you take the lettering off a sign and you can tell what's being sold there, it's a sign."
Say that one again, George.
If you take the lettering off of a structure that's related to a sign, so if you take off the beverage.
255 Main Street, you know what's being sold there?
If you take, the stuff off within the box and you see a beer bottle, it's a fair assumption that that's for sale at that place. That's what's implied, not quite. That's what's stated in the definition of a sign, something which attracts attention, basically, something which is iconic. If you see something that looks like a beer bottle and places itself here, it's a sign.
So, basically, we would be including that base as part of the sign, square footage.
So, then, again, I don't want to, it's our job to interpret the regulations, CBA function.
Are the building inspectors the first?
Yeah, I think we're having troubles with that.
If you have no objection to the sign, that's the whole thing, you could consider making a referral request to the building inspector to ensure that at some point they can refer it to the zoning board for variance to exceed the sign.
But if it's not bigger than the allowed size, what does it matter?
If you add the base in, it'd be 90 square feet.
Then that's bigger.
Within the square is 18 square feet.
Yeah, where it says K&amp;E Beverage, that's, that meets the requirement of the sign max. But if you say this, because of the shape of it, is also a sign, well, that's clearly going to be more than the maximum allowed. So, we have two issues on the table. One, is the shape of the bottle considered part of the sign and we need a definition from the building inspector? And if it is, then the second one is, you could either go to ZBA for variance on it or change the shape of that bottle. And if it is, then the second one is, you could either go to the ZBA for a variance on it, or change the shape of that bottle.
Question for you.
Sure.
The, uh, the building inspector, Stacy?
Yep.
She would be able to say whether or not this would have to go for a variance on her opinion, whether this constitutes a sign, the skirt of base?
No, George, yeah.
Well, if she determines that it is a sign, then you can either stick a variance, or you can seek, you can feel from her interpretation of it.
What if she determines that it's not a sign?
Then you would not be required to show the variance.
And she would be able to approve the sign based on that interpretation?
Yes.
So I think what we'll.
She would be able, the board would be able to review it if she could.
Tonight?
Not tonight.
Not this board?
No.
Okay.
First, the building inspector needs to make up, make an interpretation, then the board knows what it's dealing with in terms of sign area.
All right, I think I'm, uh, I'm sorry, I'm a little confused.
Let me, let me back up.
Why did it come to this board?
Because we approve signs.
All signs? Because I get signs approved without coming to the board?
No, I think, um, in this case, it's part of the, um, application of his old site plan and everything else that's associated with this.
Gotcha. Okay, okay, agreed, yeah.
I spoke to Stacy also about this, and she said that she really wanted the board to take a look at this. Site plan.
In relationship to its site plan. So I think what we're hearing from the board, then, is we'll refer back to the building inspector for determination of the bottle shape of the, of that, and whether it constitutes a sign or not. If she says it doesn't constitute part of the signage, then we could probably approve it at our next meeting.
So there would be another meeting required?
Yeah, but if it's straightforward from her, I don't think you would need to attend.
And then, this is, I guess, what was on the site plan?
Yep.
It looks like something that an architect just kind of threw on there, just to get it on there, and to present something with the square footage. Has, you know, no design, you know.
Well, that's why you're doing, that's why it's, yeah.
So that's why Bill is coming forward with this particular layout.
And the final, when Bill's finally finished making the modifications, he would show your sign on the, as completed site plan, not that monument.
Okay, so, just so I'm clear, because he's gonna be asking me questions tomorrow, I'm sure. This sign, let's say, the bottle was gone, and it was a straight-down base that doesn't resemble a beer bottle or anything like that, would that be something that would be considered by this board to be an approved-type sign, where we can start hammering away and building it tomorrow?
Probably not tomorrow, probably at, when's mine next, '26, '20?
Yeah, '26.
In two weeks, or less than two weeks.
In a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
So either it, uh.
If Stacy says it's a sign, it's not a sign.
It still has to go to another meeting, I just, because I need to be clear on that when I explain it to him.
Let's start with, we'll send it back to Stacy.
Yeah.
We'll ask her for a definition of whether 250, where 255 Main Street is, is part of the sign. If that's part of the sign, then we'll get back to you and tell you that, A, you're over the, the square footage now. You can either make that into a pole with the address on it, um, or you could go to the ZBA for a variance on the, on the square footage of the sign.
So the ZBA will consider this, if, if it's deemed as square footage of the sign, the ZBA will see it, they'll present it in front of them as you would need to get an area variance, in that case?
Yep.
I hope you go for the variance, because I think it's a really nice way of jazzing up a pole, personally. So, you know, I see the point that it's larger, but I think it's cool.
Thank you.
And the only other thing we're gonna note on it is that, um, for any approval, that we'll anticipate that there'll be proper landscaping of the entire planter.
Yeah.
Okay.
Question, I, to this gentleman, are you the attorney?
Yeah.
Would that be considered the same kind of interpretation that's like the bottle? Does that, they don't sell bottles. I mean, does that, is it a gray area, or? I'm sorry? So this would be kind of along the same lines as the beer bottle, is what you're saying? That's what I was showing him.
Yeah, yeah, I think you fall in the same category there, even though they all.
I was just curious about that.
Yeah, it's, it's, but, so we'll ask for a clarification from the building inspector on that. Depending on that, we'll turn it around and let you know which way it will go. She says it's not part of the sign, we'll put it back on the agenda for, um, our next meeting, and go forward with it. If it's considered part of the sign, we'll say that you have two options, either you change, change the pole, or you take it to the ZBA for a variance, because you're over the square footage.
We also suggest, for purposes of landscaping, that the planning's number and type indicated, so the building inspector has some criteria to. We have had landscaping plans before which evaporate over time.
Yeah, we fell in the landscape. Just, instead of one tree, I know it's not yours, but.
I mean, I could put greenery in there to show, I wouldn't know like a box plant from a rhododendron or anything like that, so, I mean, you know, like.
Some low, low-bearing shrubs, we don't want to block the sign.
Yeah, put green down there and put low-bearing shrubs kind of thing, okay. So then, you bring it to her attention, to Stacy's attention, and she'll contact me, I guess, and let me know where it's going from there?
Well, yeah, we'll get right back to you, so you can say, "Okay, that's part of the sign." You talked to Bill, do I want to go for a variance on an oversized sign, or do I want to put, and you can tell him, we just put, you know, some pole with the 255 Main Street on it.
Okay.
That would not be a beer bottle.
Is this young lady on the variance board?
No.
Wouldn't that be?
Tough luck.
She the only one that seems like it?
I only want a big building.
Hey, she's our, she's our.
Astarica.
That's right.
Judge here.
Yeah, that's, that's true. All right, we'll talk with Stacy tomorrow on this, and we'll get your answer as quickly as possible.
Thank you. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. And then, we'll follow up whether you actually need to be at a meeting or not. I know it's, it's a small thing, and and everybody doesn't look for a night out on the town, going to a town planning board meeting, but.
Appreciate that, thank you.
We'll keep you posted on it. Thanks. George? RV?
There is a zoning amendment which has been, you have considered, I believe, at the August meeting, was revised and modified in response to our, the Hoster County Planning Board comments. They have suggested that the requirement for municipal water supply in the RV district be incorporated into the actual section of the RV zoning regulations, so that there is no question that it applies to the RV and not to other districts. Because that, I gave you a memo which lays out the rationale, but as you may be aware in the P, if you are one district, you can municipal water supply double the density. That is basically a mechanism to incentivize higher density in the municipal infrastructure. In the RV district, that's not an option to carry out residential use. You must have the municipal water supply available. Building inspector has determined, in one case, that that would be satisfied by having a town backup district available with a takeover agreement. There has been interest in other RV designations, so it was deep advisable to incorporate that into the RV requirement directly. That's what the amendment does. Finds what municipal water is, defines a backup district is acceptable in the RV district to meet that requirement. The town board is going to consider that at, I think at this point, it's probably November meeting, and we'll be looking for reform or recommendation. And if you don't respond with that 40-foot day, they assume you would be.
One of the things that we've looked at in Park Point is, is the water requirements on here. The code in here, there will be change in the code, um, is, um, uh, where you would need, I'm looking forward, I didn't highlight it. Amendment clarifies central water system would be considered to satisfy the requirement if a backup district is established, the owner and the town reach agreement on the terms in which the town would take over the system, and the owner gives the town irrevocable order, offer of dedication. So one of the things we wrestle with on Park Point is how and when, by many that we, in the zoning code, will be the requirement to, to do that. So we don't have to worry about if, or when, or how. It's in the code, and they have, you know, somewhere along in that agreement has to be put together. Any other comments, thoughts, ideas? Send a memo to the town board recommending a planning board approval of, um, amendment to chapter, uh, to the RV zoning amendment, and, uh, for the proposed definition of the municipal water facility supply.
So.
Thank you, Peter. Any further discussion? Okay. The other one was accessory apartment?
Yes, but it is the proposed amendment to, uh, section 140-17. Right now, it provides that you can put an accessory apartment in a structure if that structure was built before 1986. That's when the law was adopted. The result of that is, if there is a diminishing supply of residences to meet that qualification, the original intent was to allow, to ensure that someone did build a house with the intent of doing that from the get-go. So, we've discussed this with Stacy. It appeared to accomplish the same purpose, if you allow an interval for approximately seven years to exist, before someone could make that application. Basically, that's what the amendment does, is the substantive change. Clarifies some of the things that have come up over the years regarding water supply and things of that nature, but I don't think there's anything substantive other than the period of time being flexible now, so that someone can, after seven years, make application.
So it's seven years after the construction, or after the approval?
Seven years after CO issue for residential use.
Makes sense.
Yeah, I think going back to 1986, we're running out, running out. We've had, built a few homes since that time.
Like in a historic preservation.
Yeah, a couple more places.
That's what I got out of it. It was basically just taking that 1986 time period out of there and just going back, so we could get an application for an accessory apartment for 2003, 2004, a house that was built at that time.
Up to 2006.
Yep.
So if you had a place that was built, an apartment that was built before 1986, but you never got, would this subsume that, override that, the '86? It's gone.
1986 is more than seven years.
Yeah, I gotcha. Okay.
There are some cases where a building has, you know, is old enough that there was no zoning place when it was constructed, and it was never a CO issue for it. The building inspector deals with that, basically, by applying the conforming use requirements, so. But since 1986, it's, the role has been a CO.
Yeah, there would be all COs since that time. So, I had a motion to recommend to the town board to enact, um, the amendment to chapter 140 on, regarding accessory apartments, and the planning boards have been in agreement with, with the amendment.
So moved.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Zach, why are you here?
Somebody just told me something about, uh, Quick Check was looking to purchase a piece of property in New Falls, between this freeway and Little Park Point as well.
You are about a week and a half early.
Oh, really? Okay.
I don't know, we, we have an application, CVS is looking at an application for that spot, uh, with, uh.
Can I ask a question about that?
Let me just finish, with, with a, with a gas facility there, okay? We haven't, we're not reviewing it tonight, but they're, they're doing, uh, the fourth Monday of the month at our next planning board meeting. Okay?
Just curious to see what was going to come out about it, and impact as far as traffic goes and so forth, you know?
Yeah, yeah, we won't start, we don't have it on the agenda tonight. We got the package, uh, the planning board has, has gotten the package, but it's scheduled for the, for the next meeting. I didn't want to keep you up late tonight, you know?
All right, thank you.
You're welcome, Zach. Okay.
Okay, I do have a general question, not about that application, just totally general. What in zoning, planning zoning laws, what if there, it doesn't seem to be a need for a project, then what? Like, let's just say there's already eight gas stations and four pharmacies in this town, and another one was proposed.
Well, I don't think you ever say.
I guess how do you determine, what if this town just became wall-to-wall gas stations? Let's just say, put it that way.
It wouldn't make business sense.
What was that?
It wouldn't make business sense.
I understand that, but if, if for some reason, gas stations just kept applying to build gas stations in town, what is our rationale to say, "We don't want 100 gas stations in this town"?
We have a zone.
That's my question.
Distance between stations.
Oh.
And they're gonna have to apply for variance, I think. Am I correct?
Yep. In this, in this particular case.
Okay, good.
There is a, in, in the code, there's a requirement to be, and.
Why?
Gas stations, this is, again, in the code now, but you can't build a gas station within 2,000 feet of an existing gas station.
Question answered. I'm so glad I asked. Thank you.
Notice that there are several exemptions already.
There are gas stations that existed prior to that, and that exists now.
Okay, all right.
On it, but that's, that's one of the things that's in the code now. That's one of the things we'll have to wrestle with on the application.
Great.
Okay, as far as, do we need another pharmacy or not, or do we need another bar or not? That's, that's, as Peter would say.
I mean, we need more pizza.
We need, well, pizza. Yeah, but not a chain. We don't, anyhow. I think, uh, clearly, as Peter said, it's, we don't make the decisions of how many are allowed in there, they make it from a business sense.
Obviously, yeah. Okay.
Like, we don't want too many chocolate tears in town.
Well, we got a bunch.
I got a bunch. Okay, so we'll be reviewing CVS at our next meeting. Okay. Well, thank you. Here, we'll be here next meeting, next month? Okay. No, yeah, yeah, I'm just. The changing of the guard? The changing of the guard?
Is this the administrative discussion? Is this the administrative discussion?
Yep.
Okay.
You want us up your mic?
Sure, you can hear, you can hear from anywhere.
Hi, buddy. Just short week.
Wednesdays are long days for me. I shouldn't, shouldn't have meetings on Wednesdays often. I have my grandson all day, from 7:30 to 5:00.
Oh, is your grandson there?
Two and a half years old, and I take the nap before he does. That's really bad. Okay. Dave, update on...
We got something this afternoon from Paul Bishop that has, my printer decided it was tired. I have to share. I have sent these out though electronically. The revision is mostly on the back page where he's put a summary of public safety impacts.
Do we only have this many?
That's good. Yeah, they'll share.
We'll share, we can share.
Well, you can look at it, but you have to give it back. You're only allowed one copy, okay?
I have it here if anybody wants to. So it's kind of a minor addition there. And he said he would take off the draft if the board was satisfied with his final addition. There's also a short section on page eight about the rescue squad.
Just to give the board a couple of moles, not to make a decision, we'll give them a week, and if you got any comments on CDR's report, getting back to Dave, if by next Wednesday we don't hear anything from anybody, then we'll tell them to finalize the report. Because I do have a couple of board members not here, and they'll be reading it over the weekend. With regard to the rest of the FEIS, Dave?
Just real quick, this has really changed from, they just sort of summarized it?
It's a summary.
Okay.
There's nothing new, I don't think there's anything new that's...
No, not anything new in this at all, so I don't imagine much comment to come.
Yeah.
We need to...
What's that?
The FEIS, we need to synthesize this into a few pages and include that in the FEIS. This will be, again, label this as appendix S1, this will be added right after the board.
But you didn't send this to us in electronic form yet.
Yeah, we already have, just about two hours ago.
Oh, okay. Yes.
You didn't read it in 5:00 to 7:00 when you walked through the door here? Okay.
There are several pieces in the backend of the FEIS that I have to take part of that summary and include that. We have to distinguish between the coming reports and the findings of this report in the FEIS. Though I still need to, I guess my biggest piece right now is to get that, this down to a few pages and put that in the report in the FEIS.
I did take on at our last meeting, they're responsible to write up that fiscal report, and have not gotten to it yet, know what I'm going to do, but basically it will be done and to the board members by Monday. For a read-through, comments back, finalizing on that. As far as the documentation and logistics of the rest of the FEIS, except for that tweaking with the fiscal impacts, the rest of it is out to everybody. Give it one last shot. Lynn's gotten some comments back.
Get some comments, I'll still get some comments from George.
Oh, 6 o'clock. Boy, I don't know any of this stuff going on. Cooking dinner.
I just have one thing, I was going through all of my lists and documents and everything, and I just wondered if you guys had, or if you'd responded to, or if we've incorporated just the ENCV memo from August 7th, and then Spiders' memo from September 25th? Those are just my only, I just wonder the final comments on those.
I was wondering about that myself, because they came in after the deadline of public hearing part, and so we might have to just...
Well, Spiders is a response to the FEIS.
Yeah, Spiders, but that's, again, before we've had a public hearing, so maybe...
Well, I guess I'm not thinking of them as public comments, but as kind of like consultants helping us, you know, improve the FEIS, but they're basically my same questions, so I guess, yeah. What do we do? Well, I guess we just say, there's my list.
Well, we'll take a look and see if we can ballpark and address and to respond to. If we didn't respond to, then we'll have to take a look at how we'd respond to. But, you know, if one says it's blue and one says it's red, from a board perspective, you gotta say, okay, what do we want to do with that issue? And come up with a conclusion on that.
Yeah.
So I don't want to get into a debating society, we just get hung out to dry, we gotta pick what side of the fence we want. In the report, to state, it's better to say, we're doing this because, and either it's because Spider said something that we believe in, or ENCV says that we believe in.
I think they're both on the same page. I think it's just there's, oh, I think this is what you're saying, there's differences between those two memos and the FEIS, and then how do we, is that what you're saying? Reconcile those, yeah. But that's my question to the applicants.
No, it's not, don't worry about it. It's not his anymore.
It's yours, it's been yours since May.
Yeah, but I can't just say, guess what, all the buffers are now 100 feet, right? I mean, how do we, you know?
Well, in all, that's something we'll discuss across the point of it, you know, within the confines of, you know, the purposes of the buffer and the examples on it, is it, and it was never, even in the wetlands, Lord never meant to be rigid, you need some flexibility on it.
That's always dressed in the memo.
Yeah, that's all, I mean, we can go back and forth on that, but we'll, it's a good point, we'll take it.
Just to answer from our side, it hasn't been, it's been with the planning board since May, and those, both those memos came out post that date, and we haven't seen or changed anything about the FEIS since. And so the intent would be that that, after the FEIS is then accepted, those would be comments to the FEIS.
That's one way we can handle it, that's just punching it down the road, I just...
Didn't make comments today.
I won't delay. Go ahead.
Another question, though, is it conceivable that as we make the FEIS our document, we might come up with things that you didn't agree with?
Yes, sure, absolutely.
I have a feeling there may be some points in that.
And then what happens?
It's ours.
That's where it is.
Okay, but it may affect what they want to build.
Yes, it may do that. I mean, if they're on the same, they're on the, you know, they're going to read it too and say, yeah, we can do this, or we can live with this, or no, we can't live with this, or, you know, those are the decisions from an applicant point of view, is, you know, we didn't tell them to build a dome over the entire facility, so we, you know...
It's one of the alternatives, that's the alternative one, yeah.
Not the dome.
So, I mean, from that standpoint, it can be, a read-through on that, but the intent here is to wrap it up, lock it up at our next meeting.
At our next meeting?
At our next meeting. All right, let me go through the gyrations. Designate a complete, knowing full well that we are going to send it out for public comment. So it's not, you know, like we did last time, it's complete to get the comment in. We will then send it to the world, whatever that may be, I'll get Mike and Dave and figure out where, logistically, we gotta send it all. Schedule a public hearing, we'll count days on the calendar to figure out when the first one we can have is. Schedule a public hearing for that. One thing to bear in mind is that what we're presenting in the FEIS is our conclusions on it. What we're opening up for public comment are things that the public could not comment on the draft environmental impact statement. So in other words, if new information has come about...
Like this?
I.e. the fiscal impact, I.e. the water numbers, and I'm not sure whether we had in there, but they, those are the areas that we're really opening up for comment, things that people could not comment on before because the information didn't exist, what was not satisfactory. So anything we've done new since that is the only thing that we're really opening up. Bear in mind, once we open it up for public hearing, people will say anything and everything. I can't say, I'm sorry, that's not on the agenda, or that's not, they'll make hearings. You just gotta realize if we, if that issue's been covered and we've addressed it in the FEIS and we're satisfied with what it is, that's the way we'll respond to it. I can't stop that, and I'm sure I'll hear, any type of public hearing, I'll hear things that we heard the first time go around. But in essence, the hearing notice will specify the areas that we'll be accepting comments on. Any questions on that?
Not on the procedure, but I have a substantive thing. Well, I'm plowing through that, and, you know, it's, it's not as much fun as watching television.
I watch it from grass, bro.
But there's one thing that has occurred several times where we talk about, it'll be done with the consultant designated by the town, and is that, is it understood that the consultant will be paid for by the management of the facility? Or do we have to say that explicitly?
That's, yeah, what we have to do is define what those functions are, and the crack staff on my left is...
I was just about to say, I am making a list of those things.
And what we'll take is, we'll take a look at that list and say, these are existing functions of the town, and they do that normally. These are new things that we need to bring somebody in that, because we don't have the extra keys to do that.
So maybe email me those things you come across to see, because maybe I missed some.
She's the queen of monitoring.
Okay.
So that's the way we would handle it. But if you see something in there, I mean, certain things the billing inspector does as a course of regular activities, but certain things are going to be unique to this.
Consultant exercise, for example.
Uniqueness, you know, we'll have something in there. I mean, the idea of having a vegetation plan for the upcoming year, how you're going to do that and a review of that, obviously, we don't have anybody in-house that does it now, is it the wetland inspector, or is it somebody else, that we have to figure out. But I want to see what they all are, because you'd rather group them together where you can, and then we can get a better handle of what kind of expenses are going on. But if you see something that says monitoring, or consultant with the town, ship it up to the guy who's grouping them all, okay? Anything else? I didn't want to drag you guys, I was, I didn't really have a hell of a lot, that's what I was really planning on doing.
As far as the public hearing goes, do you anticipate having one night of public hearing, and if you're hearing the same comments over and over, or if it's rehashing of the DEIS? We went through many, many nights, I feel, very repetitive.
Yeah, I hear you. I have to play it by ear. If I get, you know, 1,000 people rehashing the same things, you know, we'll take a look at it, but I don't know, it may be two, that's why I want to count the days, I'd rather get the first meeting and do it in the two meetings in November, and get through with it and close it out, and then give the time for written comments. If it falls, if it doesn't work that way, you know, we run into December and then close it for public comments, and we run over the holidays for any comments on it, but to wrap it up at that time.
But you anticipate acceptance of, or issuance of the FEIS at the next meeting? That's...
Yeah. They don't have, everybody doesn't have the fiscal impact yet, and between the report and what you got in there, I gotta rewrite it for the town's purposes.
And then, public comment period, I mean, I guess George will draft a notice, circulate, then public comment period for the public hearing, and then a written comment period extending beyond the close of the public hearing.
We always give them 10 days.
Yeah, well, that's, the statute calls for 10 days, but this is an extra, but then a 10-day period if...
Yeah, be something like that. But they, you know, so that's the goal, to wrap it all up in that kind of time period and finalize it. Now, we'll, you know, and then we'll turn around and take the comments, and I don't, not knowing, I don't want to even speculate on, yeah, but we'll have to address those issues, look them up and respond to them.
That was a question that I think someone has, where do you see that going next, after that? To a finding statement addressing all the issues?
Yeah, well, what we're doing is, it said, okay, this is, new information has come out, do you have any comments on that new information? We'll take that, the comments in, see if we responded to it.
And we'll identify the new information, so people won't have to search for three days.
Well, we're gonna, what I do, highlight the areas that are open, but like, as before, we can't control...
Can I just clarify, those comments need to be relevant to the new information that's, we're talking about just this, and just the water agreement, and just those few items that are new since the DEIS.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
I mean, they can comment.
They can comment on anything.
Whatever.
And they, and people will.
The only thing I would ask, Mike, and I don't know if the board feels strongly about this one way or the other, I would try and refer to it as additional comments, because I don't think there's anything new. I think there's, there's additional information, you know, there. I don't think there's, there's no new issue that wasn't brought up with the DEIS, that's my...
Right, but they haven't seen, again, the fiscal impact, the water issue, we're gonna, we'll accept and discuss or take in comments that they make in those areas. We're not going to rehash things that we've brought up before. We're not gonna rehash things that we've brought up before, because we've addressed them.
Traffic and things like that.
We've answered them to the extent that we are answering them, okay? You can go back and say, what, I don't like your answer, well, that's nice, but we've answered it. You know, I'm not gonna please everybody, I don't think, I don't think, I know.
We'll get the FEIS when everyone else gets...
Yes.
When it's released.
Yeah, I don't think we'll, you know, it's, remember, that's why logistics, you were out when I said, Dave, and you will put it together, logistics, you know, the FEIS is everything that we've written now, everything that was in the DEIS, all the attachments that are associated with both documents on it, so it's a huge undertaking just to make sure that it's all there. You wanna make, you know, the I's dotted, T's across, but it's a big document, I know that. That's why the hearing is gonna be on, you know, the few items, and we're gonna try and keep it that way, but as you said, Tom said, we're not gonna, you know, I can't stop anybody talking about anything. But once we get that information, we'll address those things that are part of this new public hearing on the fiscal impact, on border, and address our answers to it, and then, and then we'll write a finding statement in accordance with that document.
And we're back on a regular meeting schedule.
Yeah, 28th is the next meeting.
I got, yeah, yeah, we're back on the regular Mondays, Mondays, Mondays. I wouldn't, you know, I'll talk to the board, generally, we only meet once in December, but depending on their feelings and what it is, I'll propose another meeting date to get a second meeting in. I'm sure they're thrilled about that, so I won't have to shop for my Christmas present that night. But when we get to that, when I get everybody here, we'll propose a second meeting date in December, just so I don't, you know, we get everything that we want to get done and get finalized, because, yeah, my goal is to finish the FEIS and the public hearing before the end of the year, and to write our comments the following month, because again, it's not gonna be around and around and around again on it. Review the comments, did we address it, did we answer it? It's the best answer we can, no, I don't know the answers to that.
So we'll do the comments again, what do you mean by that?
The comments that we get in on the new topics.
All right, to go back, or are you saying to go forward with the findings?
We may modify our FEIS based on comments we receive.
That's the point of the comments.
I think the point of the comments is you could ultimately make a decision on the secret.
Right.
So if you say, you know, the grass, you know, is only gonna grow an inch, and if someone says, well, it could grow two inches, okay, you make that comment, but in the finding statement, you say, no, we determined the grass will grow an inch. You know, you took the comment, you listened to it, but you don't rewrite the findings and say some, the FEIS and say, well, someone said it could grow two inches, but we still think it's gonna grow one inch.
There's a little...
But the findings would say it doesn't matter.
...nonsense about the situation. When the hearing was closed on the DIS, some information was not incorporated at that time in the DIS. The public is now seeing that information, receiving what our proposed response is, but if it had been available at the time on the DIS, we would have responded...
Like this, with this memo?
We would have responded in the FEIS. That opportunity was not possible, so we have...
Comments are made by your consultant all the time during the FEIS stage. For instance, we say it was $17,000 for services, your guy says it's whatever, whatever number it is, okay, that's your conclusion. Someone can comment on that, but then you gotta go back and make another revision to the FEIS? That's your findings process?
We're gonna do what we would have done had that information been available as part of the DIS. We would have heard comment, we would have responded to it, it would be incorporated in the FEIS, and that would be some part of...
So do you see another revision that they drop in January potentially?
It's possible, if there are issues that we have to address.
But then you would see, George, and what you're saying is you would see a reissuance of the FEIS.
That's two FEISs. I mean, that's what the, that's the whole point of the findings.
Oh, we didn't get the findings.
Findings are your conclusions.
Findings are...
We say this, public, we gave you a chance to comment on this, and now we're gonna make our decision, that's what you do, you make a decision. The completeness of the FEIS is one time, it's not two.
Well, it normally is if you have a complete DIS. This is not that circumstance.
I disagree with that.
But the DIS is complete, but your guy said we needed to analyze more things and say, we think you're wrong on the fiscal impact specifically, and this is the answer. That's what George is gonna put in, or Dave's giving.
At the public hearing, there was a request that we keep it open, so there could be an opportunity for the town's consultant to come.
Sure.
We said that was not going to be possible, but we would provide that opportunity at the time it was complete and was available for the FEIS.
That's what you're doing.
I think there is an affirmative that could be created by this circumstance, and I think it's better, just going a couple of extra months than spend a year.
But I've never, I've, you know, you've been doing it a long time, I've never seen two FEISs before. You have an FEIS?
You won't see two FEISs, you'll see a final FEIS, which responds to comments.
Comments at the DIF stage.
What you're talking about though, George, is supplementing that document, that's a tremendous undertaking for the client, too, they have to recirculate everything. You're suggesting that we renotice it for public comment again, because the SEACER regulations say an accepted FEIS, you have the public comment period.
It's a 10-day public consideration, 10-day consideration period.
Yeah, I agree.
No requirements.
I agree, but you're gonna do that anyway, at least the first time, what are you gonna do the second time?
I mean, you do, you write down every comment again, 100 comments again, and do the same thing again? It's doubled down.
That rectifies the situation. If we waited until we had all the information, we could have an FEIS which is complete.
But a comment is made at the DIS stage of the public hearing, you know, you didn't analyze, you didn't have a consultant analyze the financial impacts properly, we think it's gonna cost instead of 10,000, 20,000. Have it, your consultant says, you know what, okay, here's your question, here's your comment, here's our answer, we agree with you, in fact, it's gonna cost 25,000, that's your answer. Now someone comes back and says, well, it's actually gonna cost 28,000, and then you gotta go back and answer that question again?
You weren't here three minutes of the February, January meeting, and if you have a dispute, we can talk about it, but we agreed that's what was going to happen, and the applicant was here, there was no objection.
In the what meeting, the February meeting?
I think it's the January 14th.
I see it in a slightly different way, I feel like our obligation is to have public hearings so we can listen to comments from the public, and then we take that, you know, get all the information we can, make our FEIS, and then have another public hearing for the public to say, okay, my, you know, you've mitigated my concerns, or you haven't mitigated my concerns.
That's what the finding, that's not what SEACER says, though, that's not what the case law, case law, it's a linear, it's a linear...
We did not agree to that.
It's a linear concept, SEACER. The scoping, the DEIS, the comments, the FEIS, the findings. It's not comments, FEIS comments, FEIS comments, FEIS findings, and that's where we seem to be headed.
Again, we have limited scope on review of the existing FEIS. What we will do, based on that, is based our finding statements on it, acknowledge what comments we received and what we did with those comments in our finding statement. So I don't see anything...
That's fine.
Going out on a limb.
That's fine if we, but I mean, I have to agree, that I've never seen an occasion where you did a revision of an FEIS. This board issues its FEIS, this is it, it's because the findings are what are important, and in the interim period, we've analyzed the issues that have been brought up, people have had a chance to comment on that, and now here are our findings. I don't, this intermediary step, I think, tremendous burden for the client, and all throughout this process, I have to say, we've been over back...
It will be...
...to satisfy the public in every single instance, and there's never, there's never, it doesn't seem like a recognition of what the applicant has to go through to meet these requirements that aren't quite frankly part of SEACER.
Time. We will issue the FEIS, we will accept comments on the new parts that we've issued on it, we will then, based on the comments, based on our FEIS, issue a finding statement. In cases where we have comments that are germane, that the board feels were important on it, we'll make that note in the finding statement. There isn't anything else being done.
No, okay, because I would misunderstand them.
I don't know, you gotta, you know, we hear terminology, we throw it around, and I just think it's, you need a session just to spell out the documentation. It's still linear, but the key, and like Mike said, the key is the finding statement, and the finding statement's gonna be based on the FEIS, unless we come up something that, I don't know what, that we will put in up, and it'll make a finding statement in line there, but we'll put in why we went this way.
Okay.
But it's still linear.
We agree with that.
So there.
Makes sense.
I don't want Dave to write it again.
So he's got one, too.
So that, again, based on the comments we received, we'll try to narrow it down really quick to get the board on the, on the issues, whatever issues we do have, I'm sure, like anything else, you got the right to make comments, too, but most of the stuff is yours except for this, and, you know, you can comment on it at...
Can I make a quick comment real quick, just the, the only issue I have is including in the summary here this upper bound language, just because it's not even realistic to even suggest something like that, it's plausibly even close to being possible, so I don't know why it's included, so I just don't, as you're writing the final section, just take that into consideration.
I will take it into consideration.
Thank you, sir.
I will also take it into consideration.
It's on CGR's own statement, the paragraph above.
And I may have to caveat it, but I think I also have to make sure my board is happy with what I'm writing, too.
Yep.
So you can make a comment at the public hearing.
Yeah. We will.
Not if I have to extend it another week, no.
We won't.
I'll drag it out.
And so you guys, that's where we're at.
Okay, good, great.
Just one file, if I throw out, said, where are we on site plan?
We have reviewed 90% of it, trying to keep this on track, same way with the water system and the sewer system. I'll be coming out with a memo to the board shortly, the site plan looks really good. I think I owe an apology to Doug, I told him that it was lacking detail, and he did, he's really detailed it, so I have to take that back.
That's all right.
We won't tell him he said that.
Should have given him another story.
I just wanted the board to be aware of that, that the site plan work and the details that we've been looking for on the site plan have been coming through that process, our comments have been in already on the site plan, the site plan and the FEIS draft, FEIS that we have thus far is in conjunction with each other, so they're both going down the same, same track, so bear that in mind, that, you know, we haven't really delved into the page upon page upon page of it in a while, but it has been going forward with Dave and Doug on getting the details that have been said.
And we did meet with the, I think you did come through that meeting with the building inspector and the fire chief just to review some of the items from them, specifically some of their questions, and we did address those already.
Yep, yeah, Stacy's been on board with this, too, as far as code requirements and things, and we had separate meetings with them to make sure that we're meeting all the code requirements from Stacy's point of view, and they're showing up on the drawings. So, those kind of things are still progressing, but I wanted you to give them a feel of where we're at on it. That's where we're at.
Right.
And...
Just want to comment.
Okay. Because I got a quote. Okay. My intent, board members, is to get it out there by Monday, please read it over, give me your comments, call me on the phone, take me out to lunch. Let me know if there's any driving issues that you want to review. If it's English or sentences, send them to me, like Dave said, I'll incorporate them in the, in the report. If there are issues, though, give me a call, don't let it sit for a week, okay?
Great.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Have a nice evening.
Thanks.
So do you think for that, for those memos, can I kind of use them and incorporate them into the FEIS, or talk to Dave about that?
Why don't you bring them through, sit down with Dave, see how they match up?
Okay.
All right?
Okay.
Or if they don't, where they don't, and let's leave that out as, you know, issues that we gotta address.
Okay.
Okay, so we don't lose them, and, and, yeah, I think, I think that's probably the best way to do it.
We will do.
Okay. Anything else, things before the board?
I'll talk to you, chocolate, Augusta.
Anybody wants to continue baking, Augusta's going back to the shop and...
Exactly.
And, and...
We'll party.
Gotta go party cooking.
Sorry, I sent that email, I was like, I'm freaking out.
But we did get you out.
Yeah, no, this is great.
So, good luck. Meeting to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Yeah, give them a all in favor, aye? We lost the audience?
Oh, it's turned off.
Okay.
Well, maybe not. I can still see a picture of that.
So then we vote on the FEIS, and then do we vote again with the finding statement?
You'll vote to accept the FEIS as being complete to send out for comments, okay?
Yeah.
It doesn't say you approve...